Seeing that the time of 4:30 has come and gone, I'm going to call the November 21st meeting of the Common Council Executive Committee to order and ask staff to call the roll.
President Curry?
Here.
Vice President Figaro Cole?
Here.
Alder Vediver?
Here.
Alder Madison?
Here.
Alder Govindarajan?
Present.
Alder Evers?
Here.
Alder Bennett? You have quorum.
Thank you, Karen. Next would be addressing approval of minutes from our last meeting on November 7th. I would entertain a motion if folks have read through it. Moved to accept by Vice President Figaro Cole, seconded by Alder Evers. Unless I see or hear other, I will assume unanimous consent. And we do not have any public comments as of just 4:35. Any disclosures or recusals, members of the body should make any required disclosures or recusals under the city's ethics code. Do we have any tonight? Seeing and hearing none, we'll move us to our second agenda item, Legislative File Number 80671, amending Sections 2.03, Sub 3, and 5 of Madison General Ordinance is related to filling common council vacancies to amend the process for filing common council vacancies. I was notified earlier that the lead sponsor, Alder Wohili, has requested referral, re-referral to CCEC and common council of December 5th. I do not have any issue with that. We need to make a motion?
Yes. So motion to refer to CCEC of December 5th, common council of January 9th?
9th. Thank you. Vice President Figaro Cole moved to re-refer the item to CCEC meeting of December 5th and then before council at January 9th. Do I have a second? Seconded by Alder Evers. And unless I hear or see otherwise, I will assume unanimous consent. Seeing and hearing none, I'll move us along to our third agenda item, Legislative File 79867, revising Alder pay ordinance of MGO 3.5. Turn it over to Attorney Haas? Or I guess, it's in LegStar, it was linked, linked to our agenda, so I guess as a refresher, last meeting we had, we had a motion to move forward with the, I'm seeing the chart and I don't want to say it from visualization, but the pay suggestion that moved us more in line with city staff, what was that third category?
It was closer to the Madison median income, I believe, 60% of the way there.
Yes. And based on what CCEC moved and approved unanimously, Attorney Haas and City Attorney's Office have worked on the draft of the ordinance that reflects the changes that CCEC approved. Anything? Go ahead.
So there were a couple of things I was noting as we were drafting this. One is, you know, the existing language in subsection A about the annual adjustment, I'm not sure if that was what the committee intended, to keep that existing language or if there's some other formula you were, that the committee wanted to use. Right now, it's, you know, based on a calculation regarding managerial employees increases. Now, interestingly, the League of Municipalities has issued an opinion that there cannot be a cost of living adjustment built in to Alder man salaries. And I'm not sure if that's the reason why it's ordered this way, but I just wanted to note that. Also, the way I understood the committee's direction, it was to have an annual increase. And of course, we will be having, you know, elections every year, starting in 2025. The way it was written before, I believe the increase was just every two years. So this would, this would create an increase every year. So that will be an accelerated, potentially accelerated increases.
You're talking about Section A, subsection A?
Right, right.
Okay. Let's see if I can bring up the MGO to compare to it. While I am pulling that up, are there any questions, points of clarification that the body have for Attorney Haas?
The only other thing I noted is, you know, the current formula is an adjustment equal, adjustment by percentage equal to the percentages calculated two years previously for managerial employees. Now, if it's going to be an annual increase, I don't know if it still makes sense to base it on the previous two years, or if you want that to be the previous year. So I think those are a couple of decision points for the committee before it becomes a final draft.
Thank you, Attorney Haas. I have a clarifying question. So I don't think it's noted in here, but your comment about the League of Municipalities' recommendation, is that because they knew that we would be taking this up or part of other conversations?
It was some opinion that they had issued years ago?
Okay.
That I just located on their website.
And in your history, did any previous common councils consider that if, since I believe the COLAs included for elected officials and elected, or city-appointed members, correct?
I guess I'm not quite clear. I don't think the way this is phrased really would qualify as a cost of living adjustment. It's not, it's based on, technically, I mean, technically it doesn't say it's based on a cost of living adjustment. It's based on what the city decides to provide to managerial employees.
I'm fine with the language as it was before. I just have a question in regards to the stagger terms. How does that then work about the two-year thing? Is that just continues, does it level out and everybody gets a raise at the same time? Or every, how does that work?
Well, the, there can be an increase during the term if it is provided for within the ordinance. It's just that the council could not vote itself a raise during the term, right? And so if this is passed before December 1st of next year, it can go into effect at the beginning of the new term. And then, really, I think all Alders will be on the same compensation scale whether they're elected in 2025 or 2026, because there would be, the increases would be kicking in all at the same time.
Okay. I, I mean, I think that we just wanted to get the ordinance prepared for, to present it to the common council. And I think that the simplest way is to leave the language the way it was. I, I own a person who don't have any problem with that. So, yeah, we should just then, the intent here was to get an amount that can be then debated at council and decide if we want to go that route or not. So I don't feel like there's any need to complicate the matter. So I will leave it the way that personally, I feel we can leave it the way it was, that the raises are every two years, right? Is that what you said earlier?
Well, the way this is drafted, it would be every year.
But what was it before?
It was every two years.
Right. So.
So I think that's a question for the committee. Do, does the committee want it to go into effect every year or every two years? And also, do you want the formula based on the previous two years or just the previous year if there are going to be annual increases?
Again, I, my intent here was to get a dollar amount that we can discuss, and I wasn't thinking of the weeds of all that extra processing that is in these ordinance. So I'd be fine, we're just leaving the ordinance like it was, just increasing the amounts, but I'd like to hear what all the people in the committee have to say.
Question from Alder Govindarajan.
Sorry, are we in questions right now?
Yes, Alder.
Okay, I will come back for discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I don't know if it's just because we're at the end of the year or it's been taxing a couple of weeks, but as I'm going between municide code for what exists currently in ordinance and the draft, I guess I'm not seeing the difference in terms of annually versus biannually. It seems like it's almost the same language.
Let me take a look.
Okay. So currently, I think what it reads is similar, that dates are just substituted out. So effective the term that begins April 21st, 2025, all the person's salaries except for president, vice president shall be $12,692. Then effective the term that begins April 18th, 2017, and thereafter, that amount shall be adjusted by a percentage equal to the resultant percentages calculated two years previously for managerial employees pursuant to MGO. And that is what I'm reading in our draft as well. So I guess the current draft in front of us reflects what Vice President Figaro Cole is suggesting we would move forward with. Is that right? And if it was on the annual, or let's say the body decides to make it on an annual basis, would the substituting language just be calculated one year previously for managerial employees?
So the, the current ordinance is set up as the increases take an effect at the start of every two-year term. It says effective April 2015, there's a salary, and then effective the term that begins April 2017 and thereafter. So each term, each two-year term, there's an adjustment.
Okay. And then I see in the draft that it says effective 2025 and then 2026.
Correct, correct.
So thank you for the clarification. Um, I guess based on that and some of the answers that you've provided previously, I don't have it right in front of me or on top of my head, but I'd be in favor of maybe simplifying the wording. The two years previously and for managerial employees, I know you said the body needs to make a decision about if that's going to be the basis, but I feel like it could be a little bit more simplified and not as confusing of how we're basing the rate when it's adjusted and when. Pay period is not necessarily a question or concern that I have, but. Especially with Alder Govindarajan, or maybe it was Alder Bennett's suggestion of the sliding or the, a scale. And I may be getting that wrong. Alder Govindarajan, can you clarify? I see your hand up. Thank you.
Yeah, I think last meeting I spoke about a scale. And it was more so, I think, oh my goodness, I barely remember, but it was bringing the salary up in 2025 by a certain amount, which I think is reflected in this MGO. And then the following year, it would go up, not by a certain percentage or anything, but rather a set amount to match, I believe, like the median pay for Madison, I believe. And then from there, it would match what is currently in the ordinance where it's the annual or biannual increases of every, by the managerial positions, if that makes sense.
A little bit? Vice President Figaro Cole?
So Attorney Haas, isn't the, I don't know if NGR was on the call when you explained that we cannot do that, or it's not advised for us to do that at this moment, right? Can you explain that again?
What I was referring to, and I can try to find it here, is there has been a, an opinion issued by the League of Wisconsin Municipalities indicating that we cannot have a cost of living adjustment in the salary schedule for elected officials. No, it doesn't really define what a cost of living adjustment is. It's a pretty short opinion, so let me just get it here. This was, it's really one sentence, an opinion that the league issued in 2020 stating that the statutes allow a governing body to adopt a salary schedule for officers other than members of the city council or village board, which contains an automatic adjustment for fluctuations in the cost of living. So there is a statute that says other officers and employees can have a cost of living adjustment. But since that statute does not mention elected officials, the league concluded that it was not permitted for, for elected officials.
Sorry, could you repeat the first part of that?
Sure. The opinion of the League of Municipalities in this, the section of the statutes is 66.0507. And that statute allows a salary schedule to be set for officers and employees other than members of the city council. And that salary, that contained an adjustment, an automatic adjustment for fluctuations in the cost of living. So their opinion was because the statute said those other officers and employees could have a COLA adjustment, and it did not say that members of the governing body could, therefore, they concluded that we could not have a salary schedule that contained a cost of living adjustment. Now, as I said, I don't, I mean, I think this current language is not really a cost of living adjustment. If you, if you said it was based on the average or some percentage of the Madison or Dane County, you know, compensation or wage, I'm not sure if that brings it anymore to a cost of living adjustment. I think it really depends on the, you know, what wording we're going to use for that, for that adjustment.
Okay, well, I'm a little confused. Well, I guess legality question, especially considering the conversations we've been having about the league recently and renewing our membership and knowing that they provide technical assistance. Obviously, we're not abiding by their advice on their interpretation currently. Is there any consequence that could come from that, especially as we're considering changing the ordinance?
No, I, I think the current ordinance is consistent with that opinion. The current ordinance does not say it's a cost of living adjustment. It's based on a formula compared to salary adjustments for managerial employees. The city may decide to give managerial employees an adjustment that is less than or equal to or more than the cost of living. So I think the current ordinance is consistent with, with the league's opinion.
Alder Govindarajan, did you have, or are you waiting for discussion?
Yes, I guess.
Okay. I don't see any other Alders in the queue for questions, so go ahead.
Thank you. I just shared the, I sent in an email at the last meeting what my proposal was, and I just forwarded that again to CCEC. And I think this might help clarify some questions here. So for the 2025 budget, I guess it would increase the Alder pay by 60%, which is the current, as it shows in the proposed ordinance, the $24,218 base pay per Alder. And then the proposal was to, the following year, 2026, would it increase it to the average hourly wage in the city, which I don't believe is the same as a cost of living adjustment. I think the average pay and the cost of living is a little bit different in my mind, and the attorneys can clarify that if need be, I guess. But that's kind of what I, my understanding of the proposal was. And then following 2026, the bi-yearly managerial position increase thing would come into play. I hope that kind of clarifies it.
It does.
Thank you, Alder.
Like the plain language, I personally am struggling to insert the plain language into the language that's in the ordinance, but that's probably just a me thing. I think the task before us tonight or the question Um, I think the, the task before us tonight or the question is, um, do we want it to occur on an annual or a biannual basis, which Alder Govan Durajin, I think clarified with his motion, would be on an annual basis until 2026? And if we want to base it on the calculate, calculation for managerial employees? So any discussion on those two?
I, I do have a question. Um, Alder Govan Durajin, with your, the increase in 2026, when it says city average hourly wage, is that the average hourly wage of city employees or the average hourly wage of city residents or?
We may have. Nope, he's unmuted. Alder, oh, okay.
I just unmuted him, I don't know.
Okay, maybe having some technical issues or stepped, stepped aside, but I don't want to speak for him, but I believe it's the city of Madison median and not necessarily city employees, at least if he was going from the, the chart that was connected to our last two.
Okay. So it just, just, as I understand it then, that his proposal is we have a, a number for effective starting in 2025. Then in 2026, there's an increase based on the average hourly wage in the city of Madison. And then I believe after that, he said after that, there will be an annual increase using the existing language? Is that correct?
I believe that's what I understood, so. Well, then the current draft doesn't necessarily reflect that, does it?
I think the, I, if that's the case, I think the current draft is missing that, that middle step.
Okay. So between the effective sentences, so after effective in 2025, do we need to add a line about an annual increase that's based on the city median income?
I think it would, I think the second sentence would say effective April 21, 2026, the amount shall be equal to the average hourly wage in the city of Madison.
Okay.
However, it's. The median hourly wage, is that what it said? The median, I mean, that's not what there was in the email.
You know, but average is vague, median is specific. It was median originally, and I'm just trying to save future us. And, and the chart, reflecting the chart that we had attached to Legisdar for the, um, item, it does say median, city of Madison median, city of Madison minimum. So I, I would say that we should keep in line with the wording. So effective April 21, 2026. The amount shall be. Based, no. Alder Evers may be able to help me out here.
Well, I think we can say shall be equivalent to the median hourly wage in the city of Madison. I don't know what that increase amounts to compared to the, what, what, doing all the, the current, I don't have the chart.
I think we have 2022 or something like that, so finance would have to give us 2023. But maybe Alder Evers have a solution to all our problems.
All right, thank you, President Curry. It, it just seems to me that if we're going to do this, we should try to do it in a way that's going to make it easy for us to come up with these determinations. And I think that the benchmark, once this gets started, should be city of Madison employees and, you know, some category like managerial or something like that, rather than all across the city. And I think it should be every two years, and it could be arbitrary, which means that some people's pay increases could be in the middle of their term, others at the beginning of their term. But to do it annually, I think is burden, overly burdensome and unnecessary. And also having to see how an increase takes place over, a trend over two years is more, I think, informative and more realistic than what might be a change that could occur every year. I think every two years is just makes more sense. And it doesn't happen to, doesn't have to correspond to the start and finish of any single term, since we don't, we're going to switch that up. But it should still stick to a two-year, not a annual change. That's my opinion. Thanks.
Thank you, Alder. Uh, Vice President Figaro Cole.
I was just wondering, is that a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion that, that we determine the adjustments based on the, uh, manager, the, keep the language of the managerial and, but have it on every two years rather than every year.
I second that.
Okay. I was trying to, go ahead.
So does that mean that it would be similar to the language now, except it would be effective April of 2027, that, and every term after that, that adjustment is being?
Yeah.
Yes. Um, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Um, do we have any discussion? Questions? Staying and hearing none? Unless I see or hear otherwise, safe to some unanimous consent?
So I do have a question. So at this point, uh, is there, do you want this come back to CCEC? Do you want, is somebody prepared to sponsor this, to have introduced, or do you want me to do anything with it at all?
Well. Vice President Figaro Cole.
Um, so you just have to change the date? Is that all you had to do to it?
Right.
Yeah, I think we can just, um, send it and one of us, some of us can, can, um, sponsor it for introduction. That's fine.
I'll just need to know who the lead sponsor is going to be.
You can put maybe as the lead sponsor, that's fine. I, I really just want to get the conversation going to council. That's fine.
I would appreciate if someone could read the paragraph as it is now updated with Alder Evers' motion, because, uh, I was hoping maybe Alder Govan Durajin was having technical difficulties and can hear and is back with us now, but, um, we unanimously approved his prior motion. And while I understand the motion on the floor, uh, is probably the, the least laborious of the two options, um, I did want to see, hear what he had to say for discussion, but.
I'm not seeing any technical issues on our end here from the dashboard.
Okay. Um, so.
Can I?
Yes.
I think I want to, um, chime in real quick with some logistical things. So the original motion that you all had, um, passed last time included this provision that we didn't get into the draft yet, which was that provision that in 2026, we move, we take another step up to the equivalent of the Madison median hourly wage. That wasn't in the draft that the attorneys presented, and it's not addressed in the current motion, because the current motion talks about '27 and on. So I think what perhaps, and you correct me, um, President, if I'm wrong, you were hoping for some clarity on that middle piece of.
But that's not, the committee just decided they didn't want that.
The original last, they voted, that was part of his motion last time, including that, but we didn't.
But the committee just decided to go forward with the difference.
Without it. So 2026, we just leave silent.
That was the vote.
Awesome. Okay, thank you.
So we have a motion on the floor.
I don't mean to interject, but I think Alder Govan Durajin is back.
Been in the queue the whole time. Now, okay, go ahead, Alder.
I'm so sorry. Um, I had a very urgent personal call to take, and I apologize for that. Um, there, I believe there was a question asked of me, if that can just be repeated, I can answer that.
Um, sorry to hear that, Alder. So while you were on the phone, another motion was put forward, um, by Alder Evers, and we have a second to, instead of basing the 2026 increase on the city median income, that we would determine, determine adjustments based on the managerial salaries as managerial employees, as is stated in the current draft.
Um, that.
Starting in 2026.
Okay, thank you. Um, I guess, are we in questions or discussions about that?
We're in discussion now, Alder.
Okay, thank you. Um, I guess the one thing I have to say about that is I'm not necessarily a huge fan of it. I do think that the goal is to get to, like, the median pay in Madison. Um, I've kind of explained that before, like Alders, i- in my perspective, any very Alders are kind of, we can dictate where the city's economy kind of goes in a way. Um, and the better we can do that, the higher that wage goes, the worse we, that happens, the lower that wage might go. Um, it would, it just sets a concrete amount in my mind. I'm not entirely opposed to this amendment. Um, I am worried that it will just still say, stay at a subpar, um, pay that still does not really reflect the work that we do as Alders, though. But I, I won't oppose this.
Thank you, Alder. And we had finance staff with us last meeting, we don't have them here now, and I think maybe one of the questions that you may have missed or points of discussion was what is that rate, um, or how is that determined? So with a motion and a second on the floor, um, still open for discussion. Not seeing any Alder Evers.
Yeah, I just think, uh, thanks, President Curry, that it's consistent with the language that's already in the ordinance regarding the, the, any accelerator for the mayor. And so if, um, there's precedent, and for us to switch it up for Alders to say that our, any accelerator has to be with the average pay for the, uh, employees across the board citywide, I think is unnecessarily complicated, and it's kind of sticks out inappropriately with reference to ordinance language. So I strongly encourage my colleagues to stick with what the, the ordinance language and not try to make dramatic changes. This will be a dramatic change in and of itself. All right, I have expressed my doubts that this will actually get passed, uh, but, and I think we need to, at any rate, keep it, uh, in mind with what is going to be, make it more palatable and, uh, more in common with current language in the ordinance.
Thank you, Alder. Not seeing or hearing any other Alders in the queue for discussion. Um, our chief of staff has.
Okay, I just want to do, one more double check on this, to make sure we're all on the same page. So if you look at the ordinance as it's currently written, with the, I sent the track changes version, I, I'm sorry about that, the track changes didn't show up on the, the PDF. Um, what we have in front of us and what this motion does, um, because I think there's a little confusion around this concept of the managerial, I want to clarify what I understand is happening, just, just to make sure. So with the changes, what we have effective 2025, salaries are raised to $24,218, which is that 60% increase that, that the, the, the group, um, passed, requested. Then, starting in 2026, according to this ordinance, they just do the, it's the same language that's in the ordinance now, which is we get, you all will get a two, every two years, there'd be a calculation, um, based on like the, the calculation for managerial employees, which has nothing to do with the cost of, it has nothing to do with the median or any of that second piece that had previously been in discussion. This, this kind of removes that and just sticks with this original language. The, so, so there's no additional step in 2026 that would raise to any equivalent of anything. It's just the regular, the first step in 2025, which is to the $24,000, and then starting in 2026, we just keep going at the two-year, on the two-year calculation. There's nothing, so if we do 2027, there's no additional step in 2026 then. I just want everyone to be really super clear on that, because I feel like there's a couple different competing discussions with very similar language. So $24,218, no additional equivalent step to get us to any median anything. Then, thank you, Attorney Haas, 2027 continues as written, which is equivalent to the same, basically it's equivalent to the language that's already in the ordinance. So I just want to make sure that, that's super clear and I'm clear. Thank you.
I don't see any other Alders in the queue for discussion. Um, I'll do a roll call for this one.
Vice President Figaro Cole?
I'm here.
Figaro Cole, aye. Alder Vediver?
Aye.
Alder Vediver, aye. Alder Madison? I'll come back to you. Alder Govan Durajin?
Aye.
Alder Govan Durajin, aye. Alder Conklin?
Aye.
Alder Conklin, aye. Alder Evers?
Aye.
Alder Evers, aye. Alder Madison?
Aye.
Alder Madison, aye. Six ayes.
Thank you. Six ayes, that motion passes. Um, that will move us into our next agenda item, council office updates, and I will turn it over to Karen.
Thank you. I'll share my screen quickly, and thank you for your patience on that last one. Um, I appreciate that. Real quick, uh, council up, office updates, city offices, of course, are closed Thursday and Friday of this week. And, um, you may have noticed in your inbox, your statement of interest forms are due by January 1st, and so take a look there, I also have it linked. Um, Liz will be sending out another communication on alder expense account balances at the end of the month. Um, just a reminder to the new folks that, um, alder account balances refresh on the first of the year, and they do not carry over, so. Um, and that we need reimbursements for 2023, need to have a receipt that's dated in 20, 12, 20, December 31st of 23 or earlier. She'll be communicating more about the deadlines for getting very close to end of the year receipts to, to her, but generally I would recommend sooner the better. Um, I'm happy to report that we have made some progress on our cross-training effort. Um, Liz and Isaac have been working hard to cross-train on all facets of the council agenda review, consent agenda document review, and I'm very excited about this. And just so everyone knows, our goal is to have at least two people trained on all of our core tasks. our core tasks by the middle of 2024. This was a big chunk of it, and I'm very happy about that so far. And then a couple updates on the council trainings. You've received an invitation in your inboxes that, or, sorry, in your Outlook that has the facilitated policy discussion on Saturday, January 20th. I'm researching venues now, so I'll provide you more information at the time, but you can, I added some materials to the invite, you can take a look. And then the NAMI mental health and illness training, I was hoping to get done in December, but the week of December that worked for folks was not available for the trainer. So I'm going to then consult your January availability to try to offer two sessions of that, one online and one in person, maybe one in the afternoon and one evening. It kind of depends on what works the most for folks, but I'm, I'm hoping to be able to offer that in January. That is what I've got for you. Thank you.
Thank you all, and that is printed and copied for those of you who are in chambers at your seat or those of you who are coming in later. And also, that moves us to our last agenda item of future agenda items. So just as a reminder, we'll be taking up the re-referred change, proposed change in ordinance regarding how we fill common council vacancies when they come up. Ooh, I don't have the other. Off top of anyone's head, is there any topics that feel we should prioritize for our last CCEC meeting of 2023? We do have a running list to go with, but some of those are more like someone coming and talking about the res J analysis, for instance, but also balancing, I believe one of our members has reminded us of the focus being more policy-driven than presentation and information. And not seeing any. May take the opportunity to provide a common council president's presentation or conversation. So please do let me know, or Karen, if you have future agenda items that you would like to get on our watch list and/or updating to the list, but I won't belabor us staying here longer. If no other Alders have things to add, I will entertain a motion for adjournment. Been moved and seconded, unless I hear or see otherwise, I will assume unanimous consent. And thank everyone, see you in about an hour.